Yeah, we found out.
I don't think Larry's personally.
He's traveling, isn't he?
I thought he was away.
He's traveling.
Away.
All right, so I'm gonna have to ask the chairs. Yeah, for the first time. That's for you. I'm gonna ask the chairs to please open their school committees.
I'd like to call the region, Pearl and Boilston Regional, and Union sixty school committees to order.
Is that you or me? Who's?
It's a really good.
It's you, Mark. I'm sorry. I would like to call Boilston School Committee to order.
I'd like to call the Berlin School Committee to order.
Very good. First, what I'd like to do actually is just start off the meeting by introducing your new recording secretary. We have Deborah DeSantis. She is joining us and we'll, we ask that you have patience with us as we go through some of our processes here in our meetings, but if you ever have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
It's nice to be here for everybody.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
So, I also would like to start by, we have Chris Baker here from Synergy, and I'm gonna ask Chris if he could just give you some recommendations and for the audience who is Synergy. Synergy is an organization that actually came to our three schools to audit our safety precautions and for the respect of the security of our schools, we have asked Synergy not to give full details about our reports for obvious reasons, but to come to the school committee and to at least explain what some of the recommendations would be moving forward. As you know, we're applying for some grants in the safety and security system. This will be some of the items that we'll be proposing for our grants. We also have some capital improvement requests as well going to the towns for our safety and security. So, Chris, thank you.
Would you like me to go right now?
Absolutely.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for the opportunity, first of all, to be able to work with you guys and the principals of these schools. It was a kind of long process. I know we would call these folks at different times and ask if we could come up to speak them and they took time out of their day. I'd like to say first off that as far as, we do a lot of security audits for different schools and hospitals and colleges and businesses, and it's obvious that when speaking to all of you principals, all of you folks can rest easy. You have, you know, they have a plan. So, each one of the schools that we went to, they were, you know, they were clear on security. They knew what they were gonna do in a crisis. They knew the limitations because of their schools and the age of their schools, and they also knew kind of what they were gonna do and how to work around those limitations because of the age of the schools. Obviously, the principal at Tohoto has a little bit different school because it's brand-new and there's a lot of modern features in here, so, you know, that, that's probably in a little bit better shape than the two older schools. Three quick areas that, I mean, the, the report that we did was a few hundred pages long. It's a book that I hold in my hand, so I'd bore you with all of it. But, the three areas that I think are kind of crucial to focus on, and we broke them down by individual schools to, you know, five or six key bullets for each school, but three big areas of concern would be notifications, access control, and technology. Number three would be continual training. So, when we say notification, the notification process that if there was an emergency in that school, how are we gonna notify everybody as quickly as possible? And that's a big key, obviously, in the, in the world of, you know, when we're talking about violent intruder or an active shooter situation, every second counts. So, the notification, there are notification systems out there. One in particular that we like and ACE actually had in a previous school up in New Hampshire they worked with is the, is the COP sync, which we like a lot because it's, it's a real-time, it's very simple, it's a one button. You press it, it opens up a chat room, and then you're actually, people are typing in what they're seeing right in front of them. So, as opposed to relying on paging systems that have to go through all the callers, it's, it's instant notification. Hey, listen, I'm in the classroom, you know, I just saw somebody walk by my door. You can read that on your computers, you can read it on the smartphone, you can read it, and the police have it right, right on their cruisers as well. So, it's a, it's a pretty slick program and it definitely enhances communication and notification and allows the schools to make the quickest decision that they can in regards to safety. The next thing would be access control and kind of technology. I group those, those two things together. Again, Tohoto, it's, you know, it's a beautiful school, access control, you have, you know, the buses out front, the cameras and what have you. The two other schools are a little bit older and, so you'd wanna try to enhance that. And how could you do it? You could do it with fixed cameras over the exteriors of the front of the school, you know, perimeter cameras throughout the school, either COD readers or key fobs like Tohoto has as well. And I, I get it, like, that's all expensive type of stuff. Rome wasn't built in a day. You know, I think you pick and choose some of the things that you wanna try to implement and over a period of time, maybe you gradually get to, you know, to a position where all the schools are kind of like Tohoto. The, some of the schools need more infrastructure improvements than others. You know, Berlin, when you walk through the front door, you know, and then you'd be able, you're able to just walk right into the lobby and then into the principal's office. The, the ideal entrance way that, that we recommend is you get buzzed in through the exterior door, stand in the vestibule area, you go to a window, you get greeted by secretary, receptionist, whoever that is, you get processed right through that window. Once you're properly vetted, you're given your ID, then you're buzzed into the school. Tohoto has almost all of that in place. I mean, there's only one window at that, in that front vestibule that maybe could be reconfigured, and that would be, you know, that would be great. Person gets buzzed in, this is what I'm here for, the secretary or the principal or whoever kind of looks at them, vets them properly, and then allows them into the building. The same thing with Boilston, with the exception that outside of Boilston, there is no camera, so you open up the doors and there you are at the reception desk, kind of a surprise. You know, if those doors were locked at that, and outside key, they will let in, again, properly vetted in that vestibule area, then allowed in the school. And then Berlin is a different animal in and of itself, which has, would probably take significant infrastructure improvements to make that kind of trap situation. So, that might be a school that you might consider just having a dedicated greeter or somebody who's just at those doors, you know, processing people as they walk in. And then finally, the end of the training, I think often probably the most overlooked, but in some respects could be the most inexpensive, because, you know, I believe your school system, you know, has Alice. We do our own version of Alice, lockdown, leave, live, the government has run, hide, fight, but everybody has some sort of training that everybody subscribes to, so that doesn't take any money. That just is constantly, if you take some of these recommendations, and as long as the, and I think it's the job of the principals to challenge all the teachers and custodial staff and administrators to know your room, know your area. I'm in this classroom, what am I gonna do if I get notified right, right now? My door doesn't lock, so I'm gonna have to leave. Or, I'm in the cafeteria, or I'm outside in this cafeteria right there where it's wide open, I'm gonna choose to leave the building. So, just continual training like that, and that's probably, like I said, the, the, the one that you can do most easily and with probably the limited amount of resources and funding. But, that's kind of in a nutshell, the report. Certainly, the superintendent, I would imagine, could, you know, could supply you guys and you could thumb through the, the entire report, but that would be it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chris. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Baker?
Have you shared the reports with the local police departments?
I was waiting to, with, through the superintendent to get to here, but would certainly be more than willing to sit down with him, yeah.
So, I have given a copy to the Boilston Police Chief already, and the Berlin Police Chief, I still have it because I haven't seen him.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
How do these typically get funded then, too? Is it a lot of town resources, I mean, majority of, other grants, other ways to?
All of those.
All of them?
Mm-hmm. Great. Anybody else?
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, Chris. I appreciate it. Next, we have the consent agendas, so each school committee could choose to make a motion to approve their consent agendas.
Do I have a motion for the region to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Any other? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Could I have a motion for the Boilston School Committee to accept the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We'll get it by the end of the week.
We're on a roll.
Do I have a, a motion to approve the Berlin School Committee's consent agenda?
Yes.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna continue to the reports. Do we have a CPAC? Yes. So, I think November and December are probably what you guys need. We've decided to purchase a yearbook ad, and that was taken care of. CPAC is also this year doing a single $500 scholarship to either student from Assabette or Tohoto who's graduating, who used special education services at either Berlin, Boilston, or Tohoto, and who's going on to college or whatnot. And we'll have more details on how they apply for that, probably on that school report. In December, all three schools participated in National Inclusive Schools Week, and we really want to thank principals for letting us do that and supporting it, and the teachers who supported it. The kids at the elementary schools did What Are Your Gifts, and they did pictures, poems, little essays, depended on the classroom. And here, the Hope Club sponsored a poster contest. And, let's see. We're also looking into a five-by-seven postcard to use rather than business cards and brochures. The committee's still talking about that. Our January meeting is tomorrow night at seven. It's Basic Rights and Responsibilities, and Kara Mulner will be presenting it, and everyone's welcome to attend if they'd like. That's it.
Jessica, I'm not sure if everybody knows you. This is Jessica Meltzer, and you're the co-president?
Mm-hmm. A Berlin co-president.
emphasize that, Jessica.
Do you have any questions?
Where is the girl's meeting?
This one.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica.
Normally, it's Diana. You remember me?
Okay. Okay. For my report, I'm just gonna be very short and quick. You've all had numerous times to, to read the annual reports from Assabette Valley Collaborative as well as their audits. The annual report shows that they are healthy in their financial aspects, and their budgeting has been right on where they anticipated it to be. The audit demonstrated there were some, a few areas of identification, the audit of which, as the board, we met and we discussed that with the treasurer in regards to why some of those discrepancies happened and what actions they were taking. So, I know that a lot of those areas were, have been corrected and rectified. The Kellogg's donation, last time we had that discussion, we weren't sure where that funding was going to go, and when I contacted the recipients, they actually stated that they wanted that to go into the music department for their revolving accounts, so that's where they wanted that amount to go for the Kellogg's. We have the Adam Scholarship recipient breakfast that we welcome all the school committee members to join us, and it will be held this year on March 3rd at eight o'clock in the morning. It's held here in the cafe, so we welcome all of you to join us. And the one item that I also have here is the draft of the calendars for the upcoming year. So, this is just a first read, it's not for a vote. I will say that we have asked for feedback from all of the teachers of the associations, and we received a few comments. One association was concerned that we had to start the date so late in August, while two of the other associations didn't want to begin any earlier in the year. We had one association actually question the additional Fridays, and so we actually changed the professional development day in January from a Friday to a Tuesday. And the reason why there was an additional Friday is because of the November holidays. Changed that as well. In an elementary school, that impacts them because they're on a five-day schedule, where at the high school and middle school, it doesn't impact them as, as much because they're on a six-day rotation. And then Tohoto also wanted to know if we could have half-days at the end of the school year for finals. So, I know Diane and I talked about that with the rest of the administrative team. We said it, it used to happen, but I think we actually, as an administrative team, I think we thought it probably wouldn't be necessary at this time for FY17 to necessarily have a half-day rotation. If you have an actual half-day as well, you, that means then if school is out on a half a day, you actually have to have additional busing routes as well. And so, it also causes, I think, a little bit, I think parents also prefer the fact that the students still have the option to be able to stay here for the full day. Tom's gone, he has said yes, so I'm thinking, so we, we talked about that as an administrative team, and we think we, we wanna have a little bit more discussion, I think, about that. And then also, the, one of the reasons why we had talked a little bit about not doing that is because in the, we now have a sixth grade here at Tohoto, whereas years ago, they used to do some half-days at the end of the year, but you didn't have the sixth grade at Tohoto at that time. And there are some parents that are concerned even now to have some of their sixth grade students going home even after school at the end of the day, and at the end of the year, having them go half-day for the, the last few days of school, which felt was probably not appropriate at this time. So, Boilston stated that they also would like to, would still like more time to review it. They hadn't really had any input at the, at this time, so I'll find out more information from Boilston, but they still needed a little bit more time for discussion. I don't know if the school committee has any questions. I know, you'll notice that we did not propose the half-day before Thanksgiving. We tried that for this year. I commended the staff actually for their efforts. However, our student population was very low in comparison to the average, and that's what you were afraid of as a school committee. You were concerned with the absenteeism on that day before, and that's what happened. So, I did ask the school committee to try it for one more year, to, to try it for this year, and we would collect the data for you, and it showed that it was not feasible to have for the overall. So, that's where we are. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions on the calendar.
Just a quick question in that first week of the school starts. So, it starts on the 31st, and they go on the 31st and 1st, and then Fridays early movies?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's typically what we've done in the past because it's the holiday weekend. This year, you saw a little bit of a different impact just because Labor Day felt so late in the year this year that you didn't really notice that, you didn't notice that as much. And we tried to follow this current year's calendar as much as possible in trying to prepare.
Is there any interest in maybe starting a week early?
Um, you know, I had thrown that out there with some saying that maybe if we did that, then we have the chance to, you know, push the end of the school year, not to the 20th, but a little bit earlier. And what I got back from some members of the executive council is that they felt that the teachers wouldn't wanna come back so early.
What was the date we came back last year?
Uh, this year, we came back, I believe it was the 20, I think it was the 25th or the 26th, right? It was 24, so.
So, it'd be the same day.
That would be the same day. That they would be starting, so. I feel like the 20th feels like it's crazily, not taking into account snowstorms.
Right.
It feels incredibly late.
Yeah, I agree with you, because inevitably, you're gonna get three or four snow days at least, so you're, you're really.
No snow in the spot. Where, where are we going?
We can always hope.
We're in New England. Are the teachers opposed to that, or do you? Um, I didn't hear much opposition, except like I said, one association's, and it was just a member speaking on his own behalf, that he didn't know as the teachers would want to come back, you know, that much in advance.
But it would be the same time they came back this year.
Right. I think it's a day earlier, isn't it?
It's the same, it's the same time.
You started school on the 26th?
I looked.
Okay.
It was the 26th, and then it would be, it was the 26th that we started, and then if we started at the same time, it'd be the 24th.
Okay.
Historically.
It's two days, it would be two days earlier, just because of leap year.
I think we should push toward that.
So, you'd like to try it on the 26th?
Bring it back to them and see if.
Sure.
It's really about you either pay for it at the beginning or at the end.
Just maybe a couple days? Like, I don't know how the teachers would feel about that, but starting with students on Monday, the 29th, and then one teachers' union comes back, the Friday, the 26th, and the other two come back Thursday, the 25th. I don't, it's a long month. I mean, it's four full weeks, pretty much, but, so that's.
I think it's hard to get the tickets to come back.
Not all the way back to the 24th, but.
Just for Friday. Thursday, Friday. I don't know. Well, for Berlin, for Berlin, and I know Tohoto's had the, the two days, it had two because they appreciate that.
Totally understandable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. We're already in there as it is. We like that Friday, just to say, no, ours were set up.
So, it would be, start on the 24th is what we're.
So, then we say the 24th instead?
So, that one group would come, the 24th, the 25th, one would come the 25th. Okay? Did I get that? Did I say that wrong?
School has always started last week of August, but his last year, his coming year are unique because of the way how Labor Day.
Right.
That's why it seems so different, but it's always been the last week of August, and I think it's always been the last kind of Wednesday of August, and it's been used up on your Tuesday. Because Labor Day was so late this year, it's kind of a little different this year, and that's why it seems a little off, but.
We still start at the same time.
And the last.
It just because Labor Day, it really, it wasn't that we started differently, we always started the same, but it was Labor Day, it was just later. That's the only change.
Right. Labor Day was the last possible day it could happen, and then for this coming in, what's also making it awkward is that last week of August is really only a half a week. It's not the last full week, it's the last half week because it is September, so that's what's really kind of throwing it off, too. I can throw it out there to the executive councils and see.
Sure.
I can see that there's two sides to it.
Yep, there's two sides there.
It's just looking at June 20th and knowing that that really could be June 25th or something.
Right. It's on until June 20th.
I will tell you that on average, average rule of thumb in New England, you see five school, five snow days, you're going till June 27.
And last year, we did that and then had to go back what felt like a lot earlier because of Labor Day, so I think that the, the general spirit is yay, we'll get a longer one this summer to make up for last summer, and then each year, it's an adjustment, whether it's an early or late.
Yep. I'll throw it out there and bring it back. All right, thank you. Next, Julie, could you speak on behalf of the OPEB?
Okay, I know everyone wanted to hear some more about the OPEB. At the next meeting, we're gonna have Adam Dupre from our legal counsel and someone from PARZ, who is a consulting group that handles a lot of school districts' OPEB accounts, because we really would have to hire consultants, because there's certain rules that if you don't have someone managing it, then you have to put so much money, a lot more than we want to be putting in, so we'd need to find a group. PARZ has worked a lot of school district, they've spoken in Mars a lot of times, so they're gonna do a presentation kind of based off of our OPEB report, and then Adam Dupre has kind of focused on school districts and setting these up, so they're gonna come, kind of tell us what the next steps are and what our options are.
Angela and I both heard them, too, the consultants from PARZ.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're very good.
They asked for all our OPEB report, and they're kind of running some scenarios based on our information, so they're gonna come to our next meeting and present.
Great. Thank you. Next, Scott Pishoyan could not be here this evening. He was actually scheduled for our last meeting and we weren't able to have, so Julie's actually gonna speak on behalf of Scott tonight in regards to the different facilities and what's been going on, a slight overview compared to what Scott's actually been doing. The poor man has been working 24/7, I think.
Probably a lot less than he has in his report, but I'll kind of go over some high-level stuff. A lot of what he's been doing is really trying to create a maintenance plan, try to move the district kind of from, on, it's working on an emergency basis for everything, and trying to get, do some preventative maintenance, and in all the buildings, really working on the security. Like, we had Synergy come in today, he's really starting to get the process, we're gonna get some of that stuff starting to be installed February break. In Berlin, it's probably been the place he's had the most issues, focus has really been on the heating system. So, while we're getting the new boiler, which is gonna be installed in June, they'll start in June, they're working on the engineering plans now, but they really can't install the kids in the building, so as soon as the kids are out, we'll get that going. But there's been a lot of issues with the heating system, with the software, just getting everywhere in the building to talk to each other, some deferred maintenance issues with some of the local heating terminals, so he's been working to get the correct air filters in, correct airflow issues, but, so he's been doing a lot of work over there, just getting the overall heating system running correctly. The library roof issues, he believes that has been completely corrected now. We haven't had any, shh, across our fingers. After a lot of investigation, the belief is that the ice dance really caused by lack of insulation in the ceiling, so they've done a whole lot of insulation up there, and they're hoping that's gonna correct this problem that's been going on for years. They've also had some issues with some water getting into the building. They've worked with the town DPW and did some sealing and some drainage work outside, and that's been resolved. Boilston, there was some leaking in the library atrium, they've done some work to correct that, working on some outdoor lighting issues. They had some water pressure issues, there was too high water pressure, it was affecting the dishwasher and everything, so that's been corrected. And at Tohoto, we're still working on getting our permanent occupancy permit. One of the big holdups there is procedures and policies for maintaining the septic system. They've had to do all sorts of testing, writing this all up. It needs to still be presented to the Board of Health, and that should be the last step to get that completed. There's continued HVAC issues here. He's been working with the manufacturer's reps, trying to get to the root of the problem, get additional training for the building management and preventative maintenance for here. And there's also been some problems with interior door, the door card readers here, that's finally been resolved, so Scott's been working on that.
The first time since 2012, right? Since 2013? First time? Yep. So, he has been very, very busy, and I do wanna thank the people in Boilston and Berlin. They have been extremely helpful with Scott, the DPW, the select board, the planning board in Boilston with this building, and it's been a lot of work, and he's had to learn a lot of people and a lot of processes, a lot of work that's had to be maintained that has never been maintained with an expert on site, and it's made a big difference, so. I know Elizabeth's saying, he's so wonderful, comes right down.
He's brought me heat. I'm gonna dry floor.
Right, so, anyway. All right, Carol, at the last meeting, there was one section that I had promised you as a committee that I'd speak on behalf of Carol, and I completely forgot, so I've asked Carol if she could just quickly report out about the elementary curriculums for our schools.
Sure, I'm just gonna do an update on two of these in particular. The elementary standards-based report card, we did have a report card committee, it's still in place, but we're gonna hold off on the report card revisions. In talking to the committee members, we're really looking at the curriculum again for the LA in mathematics, as we've done revisions with envision mathematics, we upgrade on that, and also because we're gonna go deeper into understanding the standards and shore up our, our curriculum before we move forward and make any changes to the LA in mathematics. We feel that we are, we're okay right now to continue with that report card for the following year if it was something a little more, a little stronger and more descriptive in our, our next report card. So, we are working on that for next year, working on curriculum, and that's our plans for PD. And then in writing, Greg Monde has come and gone, and we've been delighted to have him, fifth grade, he worked on drug draft, the students' persuasive essays to NASA about going to Mars. Greg was terrific in the classrooms, he went to all the fifth grades, and we had the fourth grade teachers involved in, in the classroom activities, they came in to observe, and they came back again on the 21st, and did revisions on the student pieces. I watched him, not only use a common sense, a common piece that the students revised with him, but he really spent time with each of the students, looking at their homework and giving them tips on revising. So, we're very grateful to have Greg there, it's a unique opportunity, since he is a New York Times bestselling author and very busy working on his next book with Bill Hine and Son of a Gun, so that was pretty cool. That was pretty cool. Any other questions?
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have John, Ace, and Diane maybe just give a couple of highlights about your reports. The school committee's already received your reports and has time, has had time to read your reports. So you just want to give a couple of quick little highlights.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
You don't need to read the whole thing. Hey, I show you they know how to read, very well, I will say.
Which one? Carol wants me to mention PBIS, I'll look it up. And if you have any questions about the rest of the report, please feel free to ask. And we've talked about this before, wanted to kind of rekindle the flame of PBIS at Berlino Memorial School. Carol and me have been really helpful in terms of kind of harnessing some resources for us. And so we, I think, we're ready to move forward with staff from Aspen Valley, and I'm trying to play out the names because it's not in my report, because it wasn't official when I wrote it, who will come in and do some very deep training with some of the staff at Berlino Memorial to reinstall a new approach to positive behavior approaches. And I'm really excited about it. That's gonna happen, that deep training will happen over the rest of this year. There are six full-day sessions that teachers will come to. And then teachers will move out there and support their peers as we unroll this to the rest of the school in the fall. So it's a huge step forward for us. And it's a big one.
Thanks, John. Ace?
Well, since we last met, we have wrapped up the new part-time PE position. Michael Chance has joined us and he's been, you know, he's just been a phenomenal addition. I've heard positive responses from the students, from the teachers, and even I've received some emails from parents just sharing how excited the kids are in PE day and really getting them active and having them enjoy it. So he's been a great addition since we last met. The one other one I'd like to share was the food drive that we completed in December. A parent, Christine Bradford, brought it to my attention that the Boilston Food Pantry was getting low. So I put them, I put her in touch with Beth Ann Fonzio and Lorraine Sullivan, who work with the student council. And in a week's time, they came up with a food drive that ended up culminating in over 1,200 items donated to the food pantry. It was amazing to see in one week, the school committee really rallied around the cause. If you ever get the chance to go and see the food pantry, 1,200 items, it's a huge impact on that. And it was, it was great to see. And it's great for our students to know that they were, they're making such an impact on other people's lives and also on local, on local affairs.
Could I jump back in just for one thing?
John's always gonna have one question.
I just have to always talk to Greg. It's just that I didn't know it personally. We both wanted to just make sure that we acknowledged our winter concert, which was held here for the first time, thanks to Sarah and the staff here, who did a great job supporting us. Sarah Richards and Catherine Denny did just an amazing job, kind of taking kids out of their separate schools, which is where those events usually help, bringing them here, making them comfortable. It really worked well, even with other things going on, which I think is attributed to the design of the building. But I wanted to make sure that we thanked all of those people. It was a great night. It was. I know, done it.
Diane?
I'd just like to highlight a couple of things in my report. We have wrapped up our mid-year benchmark assessments. All students in grades six, seven, and eight completed the MATT testing. And we are hoping our reports will go out, will be attached to Friday's semester one report cards that everybody should be waiting for eagerly. So we have made it through half of the school year. As well as the high school students in grades nine through 12 finished up their midterm exams on Friday, and we are well underway into second semester. This week, we actually, today, there are dates, there was a change in the African Arts and Education Program. Those of you who have middle school students, today, they were able to participate in African drumming lessons today, right here in the multipurpose room, and it was really, it was amazing, it was really cool. And then they had an assembly this afternoon. And tomorrow, we will welcome Richard Sobel, who is the author of The Delicious Peace, which is an interfaith harmony, coffee bean harvest in Uganda. And he wrote this book, which will be turned into a documentary. So he is doing a school-wide assembly for the middle schools as well as the high school tomorrow. And then our food services director, Mary Ellen Freyberg, in conjunction with some of the people from the African arts educational system, is cooking some traditional African food here, which started today. I don't know if everybody had it, did you guys have any barbecue pork? Okay. But they were, you know, they were...
Is that a good answer?
They're very excited about that, so a lot of things happening this week.
Great. Thanks, Diane. Okay, so we have some business items that we need to attend to. So with the Berlin school committee, we'll start there. There's a disposable, disposal of surplus property as per policy DN and the utilization of DNR. John and Paul, they looked over the items at all the schools, and we need the school committee to actually vote to recognize this as surplus.
Do I have a motion to recognize this list, right, the list noted here as surplus?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Well, any discussion?
No.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the donation for the after-school program. Typically, by your policy, we have to have a recognition when we get donations used for our schools. And the Boys Youth Basketball Association is donating $250 for our after-school program supplies. So we need a motion to approve the donation.
So do I have a motion to approve the donation?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Thank you for the youth basketball.
Yes.
That's really nice.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item, Tom, is yours, in regard to the community open forum.
So last year in February, we had a community open forum. I think it went over pretty well, right, in which we had two topics and we invited people from the community. We had a pretty decent turnout. And I was interested to see if other members of the committee would be interested in doing that again this year. And if so, when and what topics do you think would be good thoughts?
I did go to the LINK meeting earlier this month, and I asked if anyone had any thoughts. And someone did suggest enrollment, looking at projected enrollment numbers and kind of having a discussion about that. I actually thought that was a great suggestion. It was from the report that we had, it was one of their suggestions, as I recall, to kind of look at the upcoming enrollment numbers and maybe have some different scenarios.
Okay.
That is one suggestion.
Any others?
I was the only one.
The only other thing I can think of is when you did this before, it was really about, you know, a bigger, a big picture, right? You wanted to get more input from the, from the community. And Julie, Angela, and I met this morning with Mark Abrams from the Abrams Group that's doing your feasibility study and the fiscal work. And we believe that he'll have this done probably like in April, right? I think somebody said, by the end of April, he'd actually have a report ready to bring to you. So I think that would be another topic after. The school committee has a chance to talk about it, that you might want to do an open forum to actually have a discussion about that as well. I know it's a little bit later in the year than what you're thinking, but, you know, just to have, because of the questions. And I think it'll be important for you as a committee to have time to talk about it. So I'm not so sure that I'm talking the same thing, but after the Abrams Group actually talks about it, you as a full regional committee might want to have a workshop, or you just actually have a topic, an actual conversation among each other as a workshop of taking apart this report, because it will be quite extensive, and to identify what you think is gonna be important from those findings. So you might even have to do, my suggestion might even be that the school committee actually has a workshop on that for the whole night where it's just that.
Yeah, that sounds...
I also, I think once that report, once the school committees have the opportunity to visit with that report, that we probably want to think about how that gets rolled out. And I know the select boards and finance committees would probably be extremely interested, maybe before we do a public or community forum.
So with regard then to the open forum topics, any other for the Berlin open forum?
No, but perhaps if we set a date and we...
Do you think we should have one? I just want to make sure. Yeah, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I think so. Perhaps if we set a date and we know there's one thing that has come up. There may be one or two other things that get suggested once we know it's happening.
I was thinking in the March timeframe, which would be a little bit too early. Because I think if we waited for the other one, we're probably into June, and then the turnout is probably gonna be a lot lighter.
You know what you might want to do as a suggestion is maybe if you want to formulate a survey, and then, you know, John or I could send it out to the families to see.
Yeah, that may be a good idea, too.
What kind of topics would they like to see being brought forward? So you actually have something that's rich in topic. Tomorrow, I'm having a superintendent's chat, next week, I'm having a superintendent's chat. I can ask then, too.
Yes, that'd be a good idea.
So we can have some topics that they might want to bring forward.
We're in a budget hearing, are they in March?
March.
So budget would be a topic.
What's that?
Budget would be a topic.
I'm picking budgets with you, yeah.
Could be. You want to talk about potential dates?
Yeah, I think we should, at least get a date.
Get some of that come on there. Right, because last year, we did, actually, it was like, it was the Thursday before the winter break. So that's too close, that's next week. So we're definitely not ready for that. So I'm thinking sometime in March.
So the budget hearings are the week of the 21st, right? Yes?
Budget hearings are the week of the 21st.
Yes. So do we want to hold it before or after? Before.
Yeah.
So if you were to do it, I will just tell you that Tuesday evenings and Thursday evenings, I'm taking a course, and Wednesday evenings, I'm teaching a course.
So that's no Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and what?
Oh, Thursday, but I have Monday available on the 14th.
Fine.
You guys go.
I couldn't do that night, but that's okay.
You can do it now.
No, I think it's important that we're there. Yeah.
So is it always Mondays?
What about the least...
Just have a ticket on Monday.
I'm sorry?
How about Monday, the 7th, then?
That is my superintendent coffee chat, here at Tohonto at 6:30.
Why, so March is over?
The following week is...
Following week of budget hearings.
It's Monday after East.
That's STEM Advisory Board.
Okay, awesome.
So next, we are in April, we're on Monday, the 4th of April.
That looks good.
Because that's when the actual budget vote is.
Is your budget vote on the 4th?
No.
On the 7th.
Yeah, that's what I had noted.
Is yours on the 4th?
Oh, yeah. Our 14th.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think all of ours is on that, I think we're...
So if you had it on the 4th, the budget, the vote hasn't happened.
Right, exactly. So April 4th?
April...
Angela?
I'm sorry, April 4th.
April 4th, okay.
Yes.
I see a problem?
That's okay. About what time? How early, how early can we do it? The earliest is better.
Six. Do you think that's a problem? I'm trying to think when we had it last time.
It was probably seven, but six.
John, does that work for you?
This does, I think, if you're asking.
Yeah. Want you there.
So Monday, April 4th at 6 o'clock?
Do you want to do 6, 6:30?
The earliest is better.
Well, what a good birthday person, you need to come to our forum.
You know what, Angela, I think, I'll have you the cell phone number, I'm sure you would love to do that.
Why don't we say 6?
Six it is. And it'll give us a little time to work on some topics, too. Great, thank you.
All right, super. All right, next, we've got the regional school committee. The Fashion Club, this is a new club. I'm actually just gonna read the description of it for everybody. It's an official FIDM Fashion Club, is a high school club sponsored by the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, a fashion college with campuses in Los Angeles, San Francisco, Orange County, and San Diego. Fashion clubs meet on their respective high school campuses at least twice a month and participate in creative activities, share ideas, learn new things, and explore their interests in the fashion industry. Clubs choose their activities based on their interests, including fashion shows, workshops, field trips, and guest speakers. FIDM Fashion Club is dedicated to supporting and mentoring students who want to pursue careers in fashion. There are over 800 FIDM Fashion Clubs in high schools across the country. Asenia Moradis, is that how you say your name? A grade 11 student is spearheading this club at Tohonto, and Lindsay Romellis is, has agreed to be the advisor. There are currently about 24 students interested in grades six through 12. I 100% support this Fashion Club. It's another opportunity of having students, grades six through 12, together with some creative ideas. So we need a motion. So moved?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Do clubs like this cost the school anything? Is there any cost to the school?
For the advisor.
And what is that?
I believe it's either six or $800 a year.
So it's $500?
Is it $500?
That's after taxes. Either six or eight, I don't know.
I don't know, but that's, that's what the cost is. But what, you know, we have it in the, you know, we have it, a set number in the contract. And what usually happens every year really depends upon enrollment, whether a club runs or doesn't run. So every year, we're always very even, we never...
So it's the same amount?
It's, yeah. Like, we have a club that's not running this year, that ran last year, so that club can, the cost for the advisor for this new club can pay for that. So it was already in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Next, I wanted to bring forward a tuition proposal for our Chinese students. We have a potential for students to be coming to our schools for possibly two weeks at a time, originally, this was for January, February, but we just want to open it up to opportunities in the future. We are proposing $1,000 a week for tuition, and that $200 a week for families who agree to board these students. And that's the cost that we would be proposing to the students in China. I went through a variety of school systems and what they charge. I asked our real, I asked Russ DuPrye, our attorney, how this works. And he said, "You really set your own tuition costs." So I did the average in between of a variety of opportunities, so $1,000 a week for the tuition. When we were doing our summer program, we were looking at $1,600 for two weeks, $800 a week. That was not a full, full five days of school. I just need a motion?
To have a motion to approve the tuition for the Chinese students.
Yes, motion made.
Second? Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have a student-teacher page... Next, we have a student teacher, Paige, how do you say your last name, Tensadi?
Tensadi.
Okay, so she actually is from WPI, and she is going for her initial mathematics license, and she'll be working with Francine Gleason. We need a motion from the school committee to approve the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and John, finally.
Oh.
Finally.
They've all been waiting.
I appreciate you waiting. John is here to talk about the Pearl Harbor trip, we have gone to Pearl Harbor a couple of times, but this is a special opportunity, so let John speak on behalf of this trip.
I think, because we're sent out, I think the itinerary and the cost of the trip, this is just something for the world, with part of what we do here. All right, Angela, John Nushe and I have been here for 16 years, and during this time, I've taken students on 10 overnight trips, okay, four times to Pearl Harbor in Hawaii, I've taken them down to Washington DC three times, down to New Orleans, to Grand Canyon, as well as San Antonio, Texas. And obviously, you know, for us here teaching, if you have an opportunity presents ourselves, try and make a connection to what we were teaching in a classroom outside of, of course, school and life, we try to do so, and that's why they can have a great trip, and they go down to the Cape every year, when they're reading a book, when they have a lesson, and they go down to where he actually, of course, wrote it, and they go to his, you know, his society down there, speaker, and it's just, it is added to what we're teaching in the classroom. So I never thought I'd actually be asking, go back to Hawaii like, within two years, since we went last year, and it was a great success.
Right, John.
You're supposed to believe that. But, you know, this past, obviously Pearl Harbor is on December 7th, this past year I had a former student who was, whose grandfather was actually a Pearl Harbor survivor, was on USS Maryland, and came to the school about three, four times, and spoke to the students, and she said, hey, you know, you know, just, here's a link to, one of the interviews he had on WBZ, and he passed away about a year and a half ago, so, and I looked, I said, you know, what would be a great idea to actually go to Pearl Harbor on the 70th anniversary and bring history that alive to an historical event that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, because even though we celebrate things here in the United States, a lot of times you don't have people living from those events. I mean, we can go to a Civil War reenactment, we can go to American Revolution reenactment, but I would say there's no one there who actually can talk about who was present. So last time we were at Pearl Harbor, there was two Pearl Harbor survivors, you know, there every day, as well as what's called two Tuskegee Airmen, they were part of the all-black fighter squadron in the World War II, and then what we call Red Tails came out a few years ago about that, and they were there as well. So the kids were at law that actually talked to people, so what, of course, they're trying to do for Sunday, that's of course, bring back as many as they can, that of course makes them at earliest age, 93, because they'll be either 18 years old and be celebrating the anniversary, and there's still seven survivors left from USS Arizona itself, so they're trying to get as many as they can. So the impact it had last year, we went there, is as the kids were there, they, you know, things you hear about, talk about, but, you know, the last day we were there, the kids, as I said earlier, they were sitting having lunch, and they went and bought the veterans their lunch, and paid for it because of what they were so, taken back by what they saw and experienced being there in Hawaii. So I just feel that this is just an event that you could be part of, would be something that, it's once in a lifetime, and it'll be a lifelong memory to be, actually, so we are scheduled to be, and I have a few others in the military, to make sure we will be at Pearl Harbor on December 7th, part of the ceremonies, as well as a parade and some other stuff to commemorate that. And all things, you know, maybe 15 years beforehand, but what's different about this trip, obviously, is we can't control when Pearl Harbor took place, meaning December 7th, so that means we'll be missing school time. Of all the 10 night trips I've taken, I've always taken them on school vacations, I've never missed a school day. So that's why, just part of the stipulations that I was talking with Diane about, all right, about students who actually might be able to go, is they got to follow these stipulations because we're missing school time. And one of them is, they have to all be passing their classes for the first term, as well as the second interim progress report. So if you are not passing, it doesn't matter if you have paid most of the trip or not, you didn't have a good time, you are not, you're going to be asked to come off the trip, because if you're not passing a class, you're not going to miss like, five days of school, you know, on top of that. And also, what we're going to miss five days is, you know, it can be a violation of your attendance policy, that what we have here, like, we have eight days-
After eight days.
For, per, you know, per semester, then you, of course, are not going to basically credit for the class. So if you are in violation of the attendance policy, which is eight days, or the tardy policy, who says 12? 12, then you, again, will not be allowed to go. So if you want, I understand this is a privilege to go, and they got to follow certain criteria in order to be allowed to go, and if they want to go that bad, they will get here on time and do well in class as well. And the third one will be, obviously, they have to talk to their teachers ahead of time and say, this moment, so what work can I take? Because a nice 13-hour plane ride, you can do plenty of work on the plane to and fro as well, okay? So that was one thing that I also pass out, the parents will receive as well, is some stipulations to go home, I haven't had four because I've never missed a school day on any of my ten trips. So that is what I'm asking to do for, will be next December, and of course, hopefully I hope to have a December like this one, when there's snow, I don't worry about flying out. So, does anybody have any questions, concerns, we'd be happy to answer.
I think it's great, I think it sounds great, to me, I think there is a finite number of opportunities that these folks will still be with us on the earth, and frankly, I think any opportunity we have to give our kids that, I think, is a worthwhile endeavor, and maybe next year, and year after, because there will be a day when that won't be available.
Correct, no, thank you.
So that's my thought.
John, is there any, it's a fairly expensive trip, is there any opportunity for parents to pay monthly, or-
Yes, yes, what it is, is, I like this company because it's actually, even though you could go Hawaii, basically for a week, the flight adherence included, it's still less expensive than any of the trips that are kind of going overnight around here, actually. So what is initial deposit, I forget about that February vacation, and then there's a payment plan with the company, you just pay online per month, like, March through, it'll probably be like, end of October, because they usually like to have their full payment by about 30 days out. So, and it'd just be like a monthly payment, like, we all like bills, you just got to have a bill to the monthly payment. That's why I only have my kid bill, by the way. But yeah, so it's not like they all, you know, pay once, or you get that, you get that just have to here, and have to here, it's just being broken up over months and stuff, so.
So if I calculate right, they're going to miss six days of school?
There'll be five, we will be flying back, and then we will be coming to school Monday.
Monday?
Yes, we will come, yes, that's part of it.
So those five days that they miss, how will, will that be absence for them? So if they miss three other days, will they-
No, this is a school event.
This will count?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just like, right, if someone's saying, even if we go like a freedom trail for that day, you're not missing school, you're not kind of getting your attendance, because it's just a school-sponsored event, so it will not count, if they have three, they still have three when they get back.
And do we have any policy about trips like this happening during school?
Nation's classroom?
Yeah, just the nation's classroom goes in sixth grade.
We don't have anything against that.
Student council goes for three days, yeah, Cape.
Yeah, as you say, it's an extensive amount of time.
Right, yes.
Yeah, same as what Nation's classroom does, they kind of go for a week, so. Again, I try and go during a school vacation, I usually do February, April, but this is just when the events are going to take place, so I just-
John, the only question that I do have, and I'm sorry, I should have asked this before, and I'm not putting you on the spot, so if you don't have the answer, that's okay.
Okay.
Just, well, this is not EF Tours, it's another company.
Yes.
Do you know what their policy is if the nation has a traveling crisis in regards to reimbursement? Should they decide not to?
In terms of the crisis, no, I, all people, of course, could get the trip insurance with it, and they, of course, encourage that, but in terms of if they ever had any kind of issue, no, but I can easily find that out.
Yeah, just find out about that, I just, I know what EF Tours policy is, and all of that, I just don't know what this company is.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've traveled with these guys every time to Hawaii, other trips, this is like my seventh time working with this company, so, I mean, I feel comfortable, but I'll be happy to email them, and I know what you know.
Just ask them what that is, just in case, it's always good for any company, just to know what that would be.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, I'll, I'll email them tomorrow.
I should have asked you that.
No, it's all right, I'll be happy to email them tomorrow and see what they say.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah?
So if somebody falls out of good grace and standards to be able to go, is that part of their tuition when they're paying it, that they can, they are reimbursed, and what does that get?
That is if they do the trip insurance.
Okay, so that's why-
You know, that's what, right, so they understand this is the cost of it, and the privilege of going, and they understand what you, what they're-
Should almost be required by everybody that they have to be insured to be-
Right, I mean, I can kind of suggest that, you know, suggest that, but they know hopefully going in, that's why, you know, I'll give these letters, and the permission slips, and they realize what they get themselves into, and they have to follow certain things in order to get from here to there.
Or you have your child pay for the insurance question.
I don't know if it's like an extra $100, or like $120, or $80, I mean, it's not, you know-
Not a lot, but it's, I guess, one.
Right.
Them accountable?
Most students do purchase it.
I think lots of about half of them, if I look at it, because I mean, because I, of course, will have like, the access, you know, being a tour, you know, coordinator, so I can see who has and stuff like that, you know, but it is definitely recommended, because you never know.
Excuse me, what was the name of the trip company?
It is Gateway Music Tours, based out of, in Minnesota.
Does attendance to one, like, trip preclude or exclude somebody, like, I mean, can they go to all the trips if they have the means and ability to do so?
Sure.
Yeah, it's good. Lots of opportunities here. No, I mean, it, especially if they keep the academic standards up, and they fulfill their obligation-
Right.
-to create a life lesson, in addition to the-
Yes, that's where, that's, right, you want something, you say it's bad, then, earn it. It is a cost involved, as well as responsibility, so.
I just wanted to thank you, because it's really great to have teachers like you that are willing to take kids on these sorts of trips.
Thank you, no, I enjoy, no, thank you, it's, it's, it's great, I mean, I still see students, I, I mean, there's 16 years, it's like, everywhere I go, I definitely bump into a four-to-hundred graduate, you know, it's great, and they just bring up like, oh, do you remember this, and so, I mean, and I've done this since like, 2001, so it's, it's great. So, I mean, thank you, but I really enjoy doing it, so.
Talk to them after February vacation.
I don't want to get, I have to work down there.
Probably find them to work.
I don't want to make them break. I don't want to hurt them, making breaks, the house might collapse, I mean, like-
We leave in two weeks for the Dominican show.
Right, so. Any other questions, honestly, any other questions, we'll be happy.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the Pearl Harbor trip?
So Moon?
Second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, there you go.
Okay, next, what, we had brought up a topic about the ESE, and the assessments, and Park, and ESSA, and what you had received in your packets would have been some more information of the Department of Education provided, all of us in regards to ESSA, I think I forward all of that to all of you, as well as the Park. So just to give a little background, MCAS will continue with science for grades five, eight, and nine, or 10, depending upon which grade they take, the high school biology, and also grade 10 for ELA and math, that'll continue for the next two years. And then MCAS will be gone, we'll be doing, well, I should say, the original MCAS will be gone, right, that's what I should be saying. Park, we're going to continue to take Park online here for all the other grades, just as we completed last year, it'll be no different than last year, they're all going to be online, and Paul's been working with the rest of the admin team, making sure we're up and running, and we'll be ready to, to go with that. We actually didn't see huge issues with that in our school system overall, we were able to handle the expectation of that with Park and, and all the online system, so we're feeling very confident with where we are. We're also going to continue to provide ELA instruction online in regards to their assessments. What we started to do last year was grades four and five at the elementary school, they would do their unit assessments online, so they would get used to it, and in February of the students' second grade year, they started doing it, so when they started in the fall this year in third grade, they already were familiar with the process, so we're going to continue that same piece for this year, so for students in grades three, four, and five, this is their second year of instruction on the unit assessments online. But I just, one of the things I just want to clarify is, we're not teaching to the Park test, it's an instructional strategy that we're teaching students how to, how to be assessed, so that they're comfortable, but the instruction itself, the content, is all in alignment with the standards, so it's the standards that's driving it, not the tests driving the standard. There's a difference of philosophy on that, but that's how we really feel, strongly believe that. Also, for our math program at the elementary school, we did upgrade our Envision's math program, so there is an online component, and they have started to utilize some of those different capacities at different grade levels, so we're starting to get students a little bit more familiar with understanding the mathematical procedures on, on the face of the computer. So we're comfortable with that, I think, at the elementary school, more comfortable even this year than, than we were last year with it, we know what to expect. The governor has decided to have a next-generation MCAS, and, so I'm going to leave it at that, because I could say a few things about that, but overall, we're going to start beginning that administration in the spring of 2017. It is an online assessment, there will be a combination of MCAS-like questions and Park-like questions on the, on the assessment tool, in accordance with the commissioner. So I think that's it in regards to MCAS, Park, yeah? So one of the things that did get brought up is, is there are questions, there were some questions that locked me out, that was a big topic of discussion for last year, and I just wanted to reiterate to people that on the commissioner's page on the website, in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 169, Section 1I, it requires that all students who are educated in Massachusetts Public Funds participate in a statewide student assessment program under the direction of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. This requirement was first enacted as part of the landmark 1993 Massachusetts Education Reform Law. The statute does not contain an auto provision for parents to remove their children from participating, in short, participation in the statewide student assessment program is mandatory. So I just want to be clear that that is from the department, and I'm just the messenger reading the message from the commissioner directly. So for the spring of 2015, the board had given districts the option to administer one of two tests, the MCAS or the Park. And it also states here that both tests will be used to report student-level results and to evaluate school and district performance. Students are obligated to participate when the district has chosen MCAS or Park. Again, I'm the messenger, and I'm just reading from the commissioner's page. ESSA is our new, our new race to the top, no try left behind, education, and so forth for student awareness. So what we want to make sure is that we are abiding by the new rules, and I believe I gave you Doug Williams, who's our former attorney, I think I gave you the handouts as well. Ken, I don't know if you have this in your packet, if not, I can give this to you at the end of the meeting, but it's really about the new ESSA, which is the federal, the new federal Every Student Succeeds Act. Some of the differences, it talks- some of the differences, um, it talks about the student testing and district accountability for grades, uh, three to eight, it's, that's a continuation, um, what it talks about the main differences here, um, the main points was about the assessment, the teacher evaluation, they're saying that, um, you know, the requirement is now left to the discretion, um, in regards to the standardized test scores, um, at the federal level, and I think this is where a lot of confusion came from, um, in a lot of teacher negotiations in, in the Commonwealth, um, was that the E S S A works a significant change from the no child left behind in the area of teacher evaluation, um, there's no longer a federal requirement that evaluations be based on standardized test scores, however, um, it's left to the discretion of the state, so of course Massachusetts has stated that Department of Ed will retain the available statewide assessments as one evaluation measure, so although some states don't require it, Massachusetts does still require that in a teacher educational evaluation, um, the federal funding has changed a little bit in how they're prioritizing their funds, special education, um, there's been a few changes, um, in that area, so states must report the four-year graduation rates for students who take, um, tests that receive, um, alternative diplomas as well, so that's one of the requirements, and also they mandate that we report plans reducing bullying, harassment, physical restraint, suspensions, we don't even require to do that, so in many ways we're, we're ahead of the federal law, we've, Massachusetts has already, uh, required a lot of these requirements, so, um, Ken, did you look in your packet? All right, I, I can give this to you at the end because I have copies of it anyway. Um, so that's really the update of all of those changes, um, I will say, and I, I know I talked to you about this, um, in a previous school committee meeting, we are, we are pleased overall with our scores, with our Park and our M C A S scores that we had till last year, um, however, you cannot compare, or I believe, and I think many concur, you really cannot compare our scores to other districts on an even, um, level throughout all of the, uh, three hundred and twelve districts in Massachusetts, because some people chose M C A S, some chose Park, even on the Park assessment, if you compared yourself to others on the Park, some chose to do it online, some chose to do it paper and pencil, so there was not an equal playing field, if you will, in comparison, so what we've chosen to do as an administrative team is to look at our students, where they were last year, and where's the growth, and where do we need to work with them, so that's really the route that we've taken, it's more of an authentic in-house approach, uh, to assessing those, um, those scores. Anything that I missed or anything that my admin team wants to add? Do you have any questions, Lori?
I just, um, one of the things that I read recently is that the folks in Worcester have successfully secured eighty thousand signatures to put on the ballot to abolish Common Core, and, uh, there's a legal challenge to it right now because I think they're saying it's not constitutional to do it as a ballot item, but it's really concerning, um, because there's no alternative, what happens if Common Core is voted out somehow or through a ballot initiative is, there's a mandate to abolish or get rid of Common Core, what do you go back to, what standards do you go back to?
So, if they decide to get rid of the Common Core on a federal level, there's nothing to say that the state of Massachusetts wouldn't keep it as an adopted.
This is Massachusetts.
I know, I know, but it, you know, I think that, um, with the Common Core as a, as a superintendent and many superintendents have taken a stance that we think that, that story's past us now, we have so much curriculum that we have been working on the last, well, the last four years I've been here, um, you know, on the Common Core, we now have the science frameworks that we're, we've been working on and building, that to do that would only bring us in reverse of the progress and the gain and the work that all of our teachers have done, um, and so, you know, we're, we're really not in support, we don't see where that is a positive benefit for our students at this point, um, so I know that, I know that the superintendents have made that stance, that the Common Core is really where, you know, that's where we are, there's always room for revisions, always room for changes and so forth, I think we have to keep in mind that the Common Core, um, really looked at the Massachusetts framework, uh, when that Common Core was developed, um, and we were used more of a guideline, and some of the states that really, uh, chose not to adopt the Common Core, I don't know as if potentially there was a large gap with what they were previously doing to what they're doing now. Our biggest change that we saw in the Common Core is the fact that we're able to actually go more into application and implementation of skills, rather than trying to hit all of the skills, we could go deeper in the skills that we're trying to produce for our students, so that's why it's, we were saying, this is a better thought and it's a better process, so, and there's always going to be pros and cons in every, of every conversation, and there'll be pros and cons even among educators of how we feel about that, but this is what we've been working on, this is what numerous hours, weeks, months, of years of conversations now that we have had with the Common Core.
Depending on where this goes, I think it just may mean that we have to do some advocacy around this issue, because there are, obviously, they've got eighty thousand signatures, there are people who.
Yep.
May not understand the scope of.
I would say there's more people that are misinformed on the, um, and I think they have a misperception of Common Core, sat in even at Boyle's Men's Breakfast, remember that, Angela?
Well, I wasn't there, but I, I did hear that you and Carol did a nice job, and so I was going to say, it's like an open forum topic, because you're right, I think people get caught up kind of in the politics of it, they don't really understand what Common Core is, and, so it's, so just a little bit more advocacy on informing people.
Yeah, and I think to some of the flyers that are out there and that people are reading, there's a lot of inaccuracies to the flyers and it's, it's a shame that people are being misinformed on a topic, so, good, good props, good, uh, comment, thank you.
So regarding the testing, it looks like the only thing that's going to change for us in our districts is in two thousand seventeen, having this kind of consorted M C A S, Park, new assessment, right?
So, um. If it's okay with the committee, um, I do know there's a teacher that has a question, if it's okay.
Sure. Yeah, I just, because I get very little information because, um, most of the discussion is around math and E L A, um, have they actually adopted the science standards yet officially at the state level?
No, they haven't.
Okay, so, uh, is there, um, a next generation science M C A S, or that won't happen until they adopt it?
Not yet.
Then it's going to take multiple years out.
That's right, that's what, that's what happened, and, um, right now, I was just actually, um, I was just asked to be on the commissioner's civics task force for the civics, as well, as well as the, so, um, I will be starting that, um, in the next couple of weeks, um, on that, and so I'll be picking John's brain on the civics task force frameworks and, and Steve Pacico as well, so, um, trip to Hawaii. A trip to Hawaii, absolutely, so, anyway, um, all right, so that one will be take, that'll take probably two to three years before that even comes out as well, um, next is the school committee handbook for discussion, Angela, you wanted to talk to the committee about this?
I just wanted to put it on the agenda just to remind you of it, this is, um, an ongoing project and you all have it as a Google Doc, so if, as you're going throughout the course these, um, couple of months, you think of something like, oh, I, I think that should be in the handbook, then just add to it and use a different colored font, um, the purpose of this is just to help new school committee members with the learning curve, personally, uh, and if you see something in there you don't think is necessary, just make a line in red, I don't really think we need this because the more concise it is, probably the better, um, the only thing that I'm hoping to add is some more information on budget and things like that, other than that, I personally don't have anything else to add to it, and I probably will bring it back up again in May and, um, like to approve it at the end of the school year, so I'm just kind of asking your feedback, particularly from the newer, um, committee members, if you learn something and go, oh, that would be nice to know a little earlier on than two years in, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything to add today, but I, I have, I guess I had a chance to go up to Canada, and there was an open section for Boilston folks, so I, uh.
Yeah, I did see that.
Yeah.
Like, maybe we should develop, um, at least some outlines.
And only if there's something that Boilston does different than the region, they have a certain, you know, some, I don't know, you know, for example, Berlin has a scholarship that we have to do, so there's some information about who takes care of that scholarship sort of thing, but unless it's different than what you do for the region, you don't have to add something for Boilston specifically, okay?
Thank you.
Um, the final topic tonight is the, um, central office location, I wanted to bring this forward to the school committee, we have been talking about central office location, I really want to say I've done a couple of years now, um, and so there's been a lot of work that, um, I've done, probably a couple of hours anyway every week, that I've been doing so that the school committee does not have to, um, however, I wanted to just forward a couple of things, I wanted to bring you up to date of what's been happening, and second of all, I would like, um, advisory from the school committee of how you believe I should go forward and what the next steps are or not go forward, um, but as you know, we've been in our, and, um, we're in our second contract currently at central office, um, there is some work that needs to be done in order to maintain the quality of that, um, office, and so we have been looking at the potential of moving into the golf house. I have met with, um, Michael May, the select board in Boilston, he and I and Marty McNamara went to Assabett, and we met with all the department heads in, at Assabett, uh, Techno, uh, technological school, because they are, um, potentially going to do, the students would potentially do the finished work and so forth in the golf house. I have also met with Craig Whitaker, who's the architect that the Historical Society has hired for their project so far, we've gone over the plans, currently our central office is fifty-one hundred square feet, and they would be looking at proposing that we go into a thirty-three hundred square foot space, um, it's quite a bit smaller than what, um, we have now, we are trying to make that work, uh, originally, when I walked through that building, I was told that we would have the back half of the first floor and then the entire second floor, that's gone back and forth through discussions, um, and as it stood with, um, the Historical Society, I would have the entire upstairs, the back half on the downstairs would be theirs, but I could, um, I could sign up to have the opportunity to utilize some of that office space, um, if I had a meeting or I had something like that. The issue then became that we have fifty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-nine, fifty-nine file cabinets, and they had a location for twenty-five, um, file cabinets in the space, which meant that we would then have to take about thirty file cabinets or so, thirty-five file cabinets, and bring them into the basement, that historically has had water, um, some flooding, however, we were, um, trying to find spaces of making that work, um, we have also, um, met with, after I, I met with everybody at Assabett, um, I was then asked if I knew of anyone else, and I know of, um, a gentleman in Boilston who is also an architect, so I gave him a call, and he came and looked at the space as well, he has tried to, um, speak to, um, Michael May, and I'm not sure if they've ever been able to connect or not because Michael was out traveling and then he came back, and, so I haven't been in touch with Michael at all this week yet to see, um, however, we've also, Julie and I have also been talking about the potential of maybe utilizing some of the space in Boilston Elementary School as well, we want to bring that forward, so the architect and I were supposed to meet this past week, but he was sick, and now he's gone for the next two weeks, so when he returns, we'll be looking at Boilston Elementary School as an option to break forward to the committee as well, um, there are a lot of people involved in the golf house, and it, there's a lot of conversations there that are being, that are happening, um, but I want to just state, um, very openly, I have stated already to Marty McNamara as well as to, um, Michael May directly, it's at a point where I feel school committee needs to step in to state, where do you want us to go, what would you want us to do, I know we don't have the answers yet at this point, I'm still getting more information for you, but I feel as if I'm becoming a middle person and I'm actually getting uncomfortable with some of the conversations and where they're happening, and I don't feel this is really my place, um, I feel this is the school committee's decision of where you want the central office to be located, so I'm more than happy to be the messenger and get the information, but it's not up to me to be the decision maker of what's the right or wrong location or the right or wrong step, so that's where I am now.
So, when is the, I think I asked you before, too, but when is the current contract expire where we are?
It's, it's, I think it's two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, right?
Yeah.
It's two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, but now is the time to be thinking about it, because whatever you do, if we decide to do, move, say, into Boilston, it's not like we can make the decision now and be there in the fall, there's work, there's money that needs to go into it, and how does that, where does that come from, I've also had a few conversations directly with M S B A, because there's, statement of interests are now starting to open up, um, where you can put in proposals, and, um, they have, um, stated very clearly to me when they called me back, that the M S B A funding is for K to twelve educational purposes, not for administrative purposes, so the funding does not go towards restructuring an elementary school for the sake of an administrative office, um, it goes through for restructuring or reconfiguring an elementary school for an elementary school educational purpose, so.
Can you get out of your current contract without any penalties?
So there's an eighteen month is what it states, unless, of course, they can rent it in some other fashion.
And how much is space is available at Berlin Elementary?
There really isn't, we looked at Berlin Elementary.
I'm sorry, I am.
Oh, at Boilston?
Yes.
So, um, Ace and I kind of went through, uh, we think that there's some potential, um, you know, they had three classrooms per grade level, um, all the way up to kid, about sixth grade years ago, and they also had a preschool classroom there as well, they currently no longer house the preschool classroom, and they are down to, um, two classrooms for K one and two, next year will be for K one, two and three, and that'll continue going to four and five, so they have a lot less classrooms than what they used to use, so what, three, four, five, six, seven less classrooms, but they've also increased a lab, so they used one for a science lab, and, um, some of the small rooms that were individual, um, special ed teachers, special ed teachers have now utilized the classrooms, but we can still move, um, some of those classrooms around, and we feel as if, Ace and I feel comfortable that we can make that work at Boilston Elementary School, um, but we need the architect to come in and actually look at the infrastructure to see if it would make sense.
Based on where you, where you're currently at with the golf house and all that, what do you think in best and worst-case scenario of how long it would take that to really go, because it seems like it's been dragging on for a long time.
Right, um, part of the issue is the funding, knowing how much it's going to cost and where's the money coming from and.
Oh, they don't even have funding yet for?
So, that funding, actually, what they're looking at is, um, there's a potential of an outside resource that would be able to provide some, um, funding for it, but not for the entire project, however, if you talk to this person, they think it's going to cost this much, and this person thinks it's going to cost this much, and this person says, I have no idea, so that's where a lot of the confusion is at right now at this point, um, there's a bunch of figures going out there.
So there's no committed funding for that?
Correct.
I don't know if anybody's rehabbed an old house, but my fear is when you go rehab an old house for a new occupancy, it is cheap as you think it is.
Oh, that's true.
And you do not get the functional space that you were for. And you do not get the functional space that you hope for. That whole thought to me is just instills fear, the whole thought of moving into that building. I don't think that's the option. I mean, my opinion, I just don't think that's the right. You're also, we're not laughing, I'm trying to think the right way to put it, but it's like laughingly aging gracefully and you want to downsize. I don't think that's where we're at. I don't think we need to be moving from a facility that's, you're using functionally, size wise and remove a third of it. I just don't know if that makes sense. I think that's a path that we should probably abruptly stop on. And again, one resource would be the elementary. If there's, I mean, if there's seven, I don't know what the square footage of that would be. Would six or seven classrooms enable us?
Well, the way we were kind of looking at it is some of them are actual smaller classrooms that could be utilized as office spaces anyway. And then one of the entrance ways we use is a storage space. So again, we're, I think we were looking at even three or four of those classrooms, right? Is that what we were looking at? Would be equivalent to what?
You have now. I don't know if it's a permanent facility, that's the question, right? It seemed like a worthwhile...
Right, but it would be something that could at least sustain you, I would think, for probably six, seven years.
Boylston's probably putting up in a building.
Right.
Anytime soon.
Well, there's a beautiful development going on on Perry Road.
So if you're looking for kind of thoughts or recommendations, my recommendation would be, I think it's worth to do exploratory into the potential at the Boylston Elementary. That would be my thought.
At least a little bit.
Yeah, I think you need some alternatives. I think you've tried with good faith of going after the Goth House for a long time now and it doesn't really seem like it's gone too far. And I get that your current space, you've really got to make an investment in that soon, right? That's, so I think we, it's good to start exploring some other options, I guess is what I'm saying. And Boylston Elementary is one of those. I think we really should dig into it.
Well, what Julie and I were thinking about and why we're initially thinking that is you have to heat that entire building to begin with anyway. It's being heated. So, and part of it isn't really efficient use, right? So we're still heating it, but we might not be using a classroom or it's being used sporadically. And so we said we have to heat that anyway. Right now, it's about $33,000 or $34,000 a year where we are. And so this would eliminate, some of that could help to offset some of the costs. We see a cost savings potentially in the long term of maybe just going into one of the buildings that we currently have. You know, and we did talk about the Goth Houses. I think it's, it's an exciting opportunity. It's an opportunity where we can have the Historical Society, you've got the Volk School, you've got the public school, the town. Everybody's all working together. It's, it's an exciting opportunity. The reality of that, I question, is the, is what are we actually going to be able to have for space? But I also question, you know, what about the maintenance of the building and how's that going to be maintained and kept up and whose responsibility is it at that point? You know, there's a lot of unknown questions there for us. And, you know, does the Goth House and the Historical Society maintain the building? Does the town do it? Is this something that we have to do? A combination? And then do you call when something's happened or, so, and what is the cost of that to maintain an old building? I don't know. And we already have a building that we have to be maintaining right now that we could just be in if it, if it works.
There are some other ramifications to abruptly discontinuing the conversation about the Goth House. I'm not sure I'd be in favor of doing that as far as just stopping, but I think what I hear you saying really, I guess, is we have to pursue multiple options that make sense for the school, for the school department.
Yeah.
I guess one question I have for you is what's helpful for you at this point? I mean, part of what certainly we would expect we would do is at some point have maybe two proposals presented. Here's what it looks like at Goth and here's what it looks like at BES. And, and we make the decision. But I'm also wondering if you're feeling like you'd like some help now even within the negotiating process with that complex kind of thing that's going on.
Yeah, I think what would be helpful for me is if I had even one point person on the school committee that could actually just help me with putting together a framework. Let's say here's a timeline, we want to look at this. You know, what's the anticipated timeline of a project we finish? What's the cost of this? What's it going to cost the school? Was it, you know, what, you know, I think I just would like to work with a school committee member and then me and that particular member could just come forward to the full committee and say, you know, just objectively, these are the different scenarios. I just, it's, it's taking a lot of time and it's taking a lot of thought, it's taking a lot of energy and I just think...
Would Scott be able to help out with that too? I mean, there was some facility...
Scott can help out with it, but right now he's so, honestly, he's very overwhelmed with everything that's going on right now that I think I could, you know, confide in him in talking about some of the pieces that are going on. But I've really been trying to do this without having to bother Julie or Scott because it's just, they have so much on their plate right now themselves. I think Scott last week probably worked 70 hours, you know, at Berlin Memorial. I mean, he was there all weekend, even the weekend before. So just to make sure they had heat and everything because they only have one boiler up. So, you know, there's just been troubleshooting and having one of the water pumps go down when you need two water pumps and working with that and getting that, but it's just, it's never ending.
I kind of agree with Lori about keeping all your options open. We don't really know from the Historical Society what their benefit is of having a person, an entity in that building. Would that allow them to get some of these funding and grants more easily than not having just restoring a old house? And then, you know, how much do they need someone to move in there or not? And if they really need someone to move in, maybe they...
I've been trying to stay out of all of those discussions because it's really not my business. So I've been trying to, you know, keeping that between the town and the Goth Historical Society. All I do know is that they, their lease is up in, I think, the end of June or the beginning of July is when their lease is up where they would have to renew their lease for that space. So I don't really know anything other than that.
But to me, it sounds like the elementary school's the best bet if that works out.
And, you know, I have openly, like I said, I've had open conversations, Marty McNamara and Michael May, the two that I've been really in touch with in this. And I did explain to them that we were also exploring the option at Boylston Elementary School and the fact that it's actually a cost savings for the school system, you know, if it does work, a potential cost savings. We don't know all that for sure, but, you know, because we don't know how much it would cost to renovate the area.
I know, I think it may be a good idea for a school committee member to participate and help with that process. I don't know if there's anyone here who wants to raise their hand and volunteer right now.
I'll support the process. I don't know if I would be willing to say I can commit a, you know, 100% to it right away. I just kind of see what happens, but I'd be more than happy to, you know, with your guidance to get involved in the discussions.
Great.
Kind of set me down the path a little bit and I don't want to be non-committal, but I don't also, if I suddenly realize it's going to take a huge chunk of time, I'm just, I'm thin right now.
Well, you know, that would be great.
I know we all are. I'm about that.
I can show you some of the work that we've done, but maybe, you know, I can have Cheryl set up a meeting with you.
Yeah, just take premium to speed and then again, just to see what steps need to be taken and who the people, the folks are that are involved. Because I had this in too, in a town, it gets political. And we, you know, we want to make everybody, say, make everyone happy, but it's not possible, but we want to be careful. So we can try to help navigate that.
And as a future resident of Boylston, you go my side, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to step into the foot as a new taxpayer on a good note. So I appreciate that.
So yes, I have Cheryl reach out and we'll figure out.
And I'm also willing to help if Mr. Stifkin knows. Right. In any way.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I know Angela, you said that you are also going to be looking at some options in Berlin too to maybe bring forward. So that will be helpful as well if you see anything or you're talking, maybe talking with some of the people in Berlin. Maybe the Select Board might know or the Planning Board might know some opportunities as well in Berlin. And we're open to wherever the school committee sees as appropriate fit for us in central office. Maybe the appropriate fit is to stay there, but like I said, it's work that needs to be done. We have to decide either we need to work on improving it or we have to get our office out. Thank you. That's it? School committee comments or future agenda items? So at this point...
I'm sure you mentioned that.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Just a question on the financial feasibility. It's, have they started the process at this point? And it's going to take them four months to complete?
So what they've done is they met with us for about two hours today. And we have another meeting again for two hours next week.
I've sent him a lot of files.
Yep.
So he's requested a lot of information. So he's just going to start.
And the chapter 70?
The governor's budget comes up tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So we'll have a lot more information.
Maybe we can start with that.
Right. And so what he's done is he's collected some initial work and he sat with the three of us today for about two hours to really go through each of the seven points to make sure he sees where's our concerns, what would he like, what would we like him to investigate and get more in-depth information on, which I think was really helpful. We never got that on our first feasibility study, which was really great to hear like, where are your concerns or where are your hopes, you know, those kind of things. And then he'll be meeting with us again next week as well. And he said it would be about two hours that he would be spending on that too. Because between now and the governor's information coming out tomorrow, they'll be putting some potential calculations forward and to bring them to us and see if there's anything else that come up that we might know about.
They seem like they really know their stuff. So I was very impressed with meetings with them today.
Yeah. And if any of you have an opportunity, I think, what did you say, March 1st was the MARS meeting that he's doing a training?
Yes, on net school spending.
Net school spending. He'll do a training. As school committee members of the regional school committee, you have a right to attend those meetings. We are members of MARS. So if you decide that you want to go to a MARS meeting on March 1st, Mark Abrams will be there doing the training. He does them every year for MARS, so, as well as MasB.
Is there any additional preliminary work we can be looking to do, setting timelines? I mean, I know the study has to happen before anything, but do we sit dormant or is there anything?
I think you wait until you see what he has and then he'll come out and present it to you. And then I would say my recommendation would be that the committee listens and maybe ask some initial questions that you have. And then from that night, from that point, set up a time that you could have a workshop where your only topic is that audit. And you talk among yourselves and as your focal point, what did you, what was a surprise to you? What are you concerned with? What are your, you know, and think about what you're going to do for your next steps as a committee. Let it go, say it's done or you need to pursue, want to pursue, whatever you decide to do. But I would wait until you get the information. There's really nothing to do at that point, until that point. So we'll need each of the school committees to have a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn the regional meeting. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I have a motion to adjourn the Boylston Elementary School Committee? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the Berlin School Committee?
Yes, motion made.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Angela.
Angela.